Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of Stanton City Council for March 26, 2020. And I guess before we go any further, I would like to just describe the circumstances under which we are holding this meeting. We have council members not all on the dais. We have the ones who are up here at the proper social distance apart, which is six feet. We have staff at appropriate distances apart throughout the sides of the room. We have additional microphones set up for council members who could not fit on the dais. We have the public outside in the hallway and have seating provided there. And we have speakers so that they can hear. And so these are kind of trying circumstances for us to maintain the appropriate and recommended, and in fact, some would say required, social distance and hold this meeting in person. And with that, I will say for those of us who are here and are able and willing, please stand up, face the flag, and repeat the pledge in unison.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the visible, with liberty and justice for
Next is the mayor's report, and I'll take the opportunity to add, I forgot to talk about the police tape that is coordinating off areas of seating so that no one inadvertently would sit too close to someone else. And we also are using sanitation wipes on the microphones at any time that anyone else is using someone's microphone. And with that, I hope I've given an appropriate flavor for how much effort has gone into doing this meeting in person. And with that, as the only other part of the mayor's report, I want to send out my thanks to all of city staff who have worked so hard on every element of this crisis that we're in, and also to our citizens who are doing such a good job. They're helping each other when people need assistance. They're trying to maintain social distance. They're sheltering at home for those who can and for those who are working in essential services. We appreciate their efforts and know that they have to continue working. And a big shout out to all our health care workers. And that's it for the mayor's report, so we'll move on to additional members, items by members of council. Council members, do you have any other items?
Mayor Doll.
Ms. Oaks.
I don't know if you all want me to share this now or later in the agenda, but I do have a report from Anna Levite concerning some additional funding that has come through for the Community Action Partnership.
Now's as good as any.
All righty. All right. It's an email that she sent out, so if you can bear with me. The Community Action Funds are included in the package being considered by Congress this week. We are anticipating an amount equal to or above what we already receive in federal CSVG funding to use in response to this crisis over the next two years. We are waiting for more information about the timing, method of dispersment, matching fund requirements, and reporting processes. I anticipate having actionable information on the funding within the next few weeks. What we do know so far is, one, CAPSOL will receive between $200,000 and $250,000 in additional federal dollars. Eligible limits have increased 200% of the federal poverty line. Funding should be expended by F-22. We have already begun reaching out to our partner agencies regarding potential program needs. The Community Response Fund continues to move swiftly to address needs as they are being discovered. The following funds are on their way to agencies that will administer services. $30,000 divided between the two Salvation Army offices. CAPSOL has developed a contract and reporting forms for the Waynesboro branch and will provide the contracted funds as soon as possible. CAPSOL is providing $11,000 to COVID Fund 19. The COVID Fund, $19,000. It is expected that these funds would help as many as 100 families and will likely need to be replenished at the end of the quarter. Now, this is, we're referring to the Salvation Army. $11,500 from the COVID Fund to secure telehealth software for the Arrow Project and Valley Hope to allow them to provide counseling services and meet their required standards. This is dealing with mental health. $7,500 from the COVID Fund to help Augusta Expo set up to serve additional medical spaces that would be needed by Augusta Health. $1,500 from CAPSOL to cover the cost of providing spaces to be aired on television for social media featuring the mayor of Stanton, mayor of Waynesboro, chair of the Board of Supervisors, and the superintendents of each school district. We hope to see this produced by March 30. So it looks like we have some really good news coming in. There's some additional funding coming into CAPSOL well above what we were expecting, so we'll be able to help a lot more outside agencies.
All right. Thank you. Does any other council members have an item? Dr. Curran?
Thank you, Mayor Doll. So looking at the news, you probably saw as I did that today the United States passed the mark of 1,000 people who've died from COVID-19 so far. This is a crisis that started slowly and is now increasing, and I'm afraid we're about to probably see it speed up even more. And so my family knows as well as any that this is a war and that people are dying. And I would just ask all our citizens, first of all, commend those who have practiced physical distancing and in some cases isolation, and encourage all of our citizens to follow their example and take this very seriously. You can be asymptomatic for two weeks and still contagious, so even though you feel fine, you can unknowingly pass the virus to someone else, and that's how these viruses spread. So I encourage everyone of all ages, please take this very seriously. We are at war. But I especially encourage folks who are in high-risk groups, as my father was, people above the age of 65, to take extra special care. And for all our families, please take extra special care of your elders. Please take extra special care of people with special health conditions. We want these folks to make it through the crisis. So we're facing some tough times, but we will get out of this. We've got through many crises before. We got through the Civil War. We got through the 1918 epidemic. We got through the Great Depression. We got through World War II. We'll get through this. Stanton is a resilient place. And we'll get some help from the outside, but we'll also have to help each other, and that's the great thing about Stanton. It's just small enough that we all know each other, we all help each other, everybody's volunteering. It's very encouraging. And I think our job in the near future is to be as flexible as possible, to give as much help as possible as we can while observing physical distance. And I'm very concerned about the economy, and that's why this evening I'm so glad that City Council is doing what we can for the city to be flexible, to help our citizens and our businesses. And I think we'll have to do more. I think we'll have to be creative about doing more with what we have here in Stanton. And we'll also have to be creative about working with other local governments to make sure that whatever relief comes from the federal government and is funnelled through the state isn't just some typical state and federal pop-up for big industry, but that a significant amount of money comes to localities in the form of grants, that we can decide how to use it. We can decide who would apply that money in ways that are going to help our citizens and our businesses the best. And so I think we should probably be in contact with the Virginia Municipal League soon about making sure our voice is heard in the discussions about whatever funding comes in as part of a relief package. The President of the Federal Reserve Bank of St. Louis predicts that in the second quarter, the United States could be seeing unemployment rates of 30%. Just to put that in context, during the Great Depression, at the height of unemployment, it was under 25%. So we could be looking at rates of unemployment higher than in the Great Depression. This is a very serious situation economically, and we are going to need all our intelligence and all our creativity and all our goodwill to make sure that when we get through the health portion of this crisis, that we not only survive the economic part of this crisis, but that we find a way to come back stronger than ever. And some things may go back to the way they were, but some things won't go back to the way they were. Some things will be different. And part of the scary part of this is that we don't know what's going to happen. This is an unprecedented situation for all of us. And so I'm so glad that we live in a place where people are flexible, where they're rolling the roll with the punches, where they support each other, and I just hope that we'll continue to do that and look for the light at the end of the tunnel, work together. If we work together, we'll make it, and we will thrive afterwards. So thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Carr.
Mayor Doll. Yes, I would briefly, and I agree with everything that Dr. Curran has said, and I'm very pleased with our city in that we're looking at what we can do to help our citizens. I know every time you look at these numbers, they're devastating in what we're going to have to spend, but I think there's a tremendous necessity in doing so, in trying to keep our citizens as complete and as together as we possibly can. During this time, this is something we've never experienced before, and we just need to make sure that we're looking out for the least of these, that we're looking out for everyone. There are children at home that don't have computers. There are people that don't live the same lifestyle that we consider the normal lifestyle. So I'm just hoping that we continue to uplift these people, our elderly, as you spoke. And when we speak of elderly, I'm at that 65 and over, and it just doesn't register for me. But I've told, and actually, we've implicated, we've implemented it at work. I check my temperature every day before I leave the house just to make sure that there's no elevation there, and we're making every one of our staff members do that now. But again, I just want to emphasize that there are so many that are going to be in need over the next couple of months, and we need to be prepared to assist them. I don't see where our assisting them is going to make anyone lazy and not wanting to go back to work. I think it's just appalling to even hear a statement like that. But again, I just hope that we continue to have the compassion for our neighbor, checking on calling our elders, and just making sure they're okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other additional items by members of council?
Mayor Doll.
Ms. Oaks.
I just wanted to talk about Comcast again. When we had our telephonic meeting, Paul Combs did advise me, like I'd mentioned before, that children that are on free and reduced lunch can receive the Comcast Internet for free at this time. Normally, it's $10 a month, but it's for free, and it's not six months. It was decided 60 days. But they are also providing tablets to these children as well, so they can have the tablet and the Internet usage, which is good news.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? Dr. Harrington.
Sort of along with what Mrs. Oaks just said, I think you've probably seen the stories in the local news. The school division, Stanton Schools, is in the process of, or may have recently completed the process of distributing computers to all of its students who don't have them, along with a device that lets them hook into the Internet so that they can keep up with their, whatever schoolwork is going on online. And so now, it's probably not quite accurate to say that every kid in Stanton City Schools has access to a computer, but 98.9% probably, and they're working on that, and I think that speaks well of our community, and I'm proud of that.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? All right. Let's move on to item A, which is the introduction of the FY 2021 budget ordinance. Mr. Rosenberg, or Mr. Treer?
Chair, we'll present the item.
Mr. Treer.
Chief, Madam Mayor, it's a pleasure to be here. Tonight, we are here to introduce the budget ordinance for the FY 2021 budget. This ordinance totals $122,153,526 and consists of the following: general fund, $60.6 million; debt service, $4.8 million; CIP fund, $941,000; Blue Ridge Court Services, $1.1 million; water fund, $5 million; sewer fund, $5.6 million; parking fund, $540,000; stormwater, $1.3 million; environmental fund, $3.3 million; education fund, $34.5 million; cafeteria fund, $1.5 million; textbook fund, $276,000; school CIP, $200,000; and school state operated programs, $3 million. This ordinance includes a real estate tax increase of $0.02, raising the rate from $0.95 per $100 of assessed value to $0.97. Water rates have increased 5% within this budget, and refuse increases are in at 10% increase. Budget work sessions are scheduled for April 2nd, April 9th, April 16th, and we have a public hearing set for April 9th. Scheduled approval date at this time is April 23rd, and the city manager recommends approval of this introduction.
All right. Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions at this time? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor Doll.
Ms. Mead.
I move to introduce the fiscal year 2021 budget ordinance for the City of Stanton and to schedule a public hearing on the proposed ordinance during council's regular meeting on April 9, 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mayor Doll.
Ms. Oaks.
I would just like to explain that this is simply introducing the ordinance for the budget, and we're not actually voting on the budget. I just want clarification in case anyone might be concerned.
All right. Anything else? Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Dr. Curran.
Aye.
Dr. Harrington.
Aye.
Mayor Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item B is introduction and public hearing of an ordinance to increase water user fee.
Mr. Schreier. Madam Mayor, it's a pleasure to be here again. Tonight, we are here to introduce an ordinance to increase the FY 21 water use fees by 5% beginning July 1, 2020. Under this ordinance, residential water fees would increase from $3.68 to $3.86 per 100 cubic feet. Bi-monthly billing for a family of four with 1,400 cubic feet of consumption would increase $2.52 per bi-monthly billing, or $15.12 annually. Bulk water rates would increase from $18.40 for 1,500 gallons to $19.30 for 1,500 gallons. The funds would be going towards major CIP projects for infrastructure over the next four years. Public hearing is scheduled for April 9. We have work sessions on April 2nd, April 9th, April 16th, and scheduled for approval at this time of April 23rd. The city manager has recommended approval of this introduction.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions at this time? Ms. Oaks.
Okay. Again, just for clarification, this is just an introduction to the ordinance.
Yes, ma'am.
The City Council is not voting to increase anyone's water fees at this time, and the same for the next agenda.
That is correct, Ms. Oaks.
Thank you.
Yes.
And this will also, we're going to have, introduce the ordinance with the motion, and then we're going to have a public hearing as well on this. So, Mr. Rosenberg?
Just to clarify for council members, I believe Dr. Harrington is prepared to make a motion.
A motion on this.
That will, you will open the public hearing, but consistent with the discussions we had during your emergency meeting earlier this week, the motion will provide for the public hearing to be opened tonight and then continued until the meeting on April 9, when we'll, we expect to have better arrangements in place to accommodate the public for purposes of participation in a public hearing, either here in council chambers or by some alternative means.
All right. Thank you. So are there any other questions about this? If not, Dr. Harrington?
Mayor Doll, I move that the proposed ordinance be introduced, that the public hearing be opened, and that the public hearing be continued until April 9, 2020, at 7:30 PM.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Doll.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
Can't get it out tonight. Aye.
Dr. Harrington.
Aye.
Dr. Curran.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Ms. Oaks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, we'll hold the public hearing, and as Mr. Rosenberg said, that we will take comments tonight, but it will remain open and will be continued on April 9. So it'll begin with the gavel. Anyone wishing to speak will come into the room and speak at the podium. Public hearings now open. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. It appears that we are not going to have anyone speaking tonight, so this public hearing will remain open and will be continued on April 9. Thank you. All right. Item C is introduction and public hearing of an ordinance to increase refuse and recycling rates. Mr. Treer.
Madam Mayor, one last time. Tonight, we are here to introduce an ordinance to increase the FY 21 refuse rates by 10%. This rate increase follows a plan presented to council during the FY 2020 budget process and will raise the monthly residential fee from $18.98 to $20.88. This equates to a $1.90 per month increase, or $22.80 per year. Rate increases primarily go toward scheduled CIP projects, both at the Augusta Regional Landfill and local city requirements. These projects include ongoing heavy maintenance replacement, landfill development, scale house relocation, and office construction. Public hearing is scheduled for tonight and continued on to April 9. Council's headwork session on April 2nd, 9th, 16th, and is scheduled for approval on April 23rd.
All right. Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions at this time? If not, Dr. Harrington?
Mayor Doll, I move that the proposed ordinance be introduced, that a public hearing be opened, and that the public hearing be continued until April 9, 2020, 7:30 PM.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Dr. Curran.
Aye.
Dr. Harrington.
Aye.
Mayor Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. At this time, we'll conduct another public hearing on this introduction of this ordinance, and it starts with the gavel. Anyone wishing to speak, please come into the room and to the podium, give your name As there is no one wishing to speak, this public hearing will be continued until April 9, 2020. The next item is a tourism update. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor and members of council, Cheryl Wagner, the city's tourism director, is with us this evening to provide to you an update on her department's accomplishments over the past year, and more importantly, I think it affords her an opportunity to share with you what she and Katie Campbell of her staff have in mind in order to help us as we look forward coming out of the current crisis.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you for having us this evening to give you a tourism update. We've been on the agenda for a couple of months now, and this was our original presentation, so I wanted to give this first, which is a 2019 review. And then I'd like to tell you about some news I've heard from our local tourism businesses. And then I'd like for Katie Campbell to come in and talk to you about some great new projects that we're working on. First of all, our accomplishments in 2019, and there were lots of them, but these are the ones I'd like to talk about. We commissioned the You Belong Here mural that's in downtown, and we did that with a $10,000 grant from Virginia Tourism Corporation. We continue to be a part of the Shenandoah Beer Works Trails. Matter of fact, Katie Campbell is the chair of that group right now. And so that's Lexington, Rockbridge County, Stanton, Waynesboro, Augusta County, and Harrisonburg, and Rockingham County has actually asked to join. And since the inception of our passport, we've had over 4,500 redeemed, which is about 27,000 brewery visits that we know about. We put two billboards on I-81 this year. We installed, and you can see it there, an interactive kiosk at the Downtown Visitor Center. It's a great way for us to capture more visitor information. Of course, we don't get every visitor that comes through, but now we're getting their email and how long they're staying instead of just where they're coming from, which is, that's what we had gotten before on our sign-in sheet. We just started a new CRM, a customer relationship management platform with a company called Tempest. This is really going to help us with our group sales and to stay in touch with those folks and our, and it's a great way for us to stay in touch with our visitors, our media, and just have one platform where all that information is on. And we also filmed, and this was in the fall, an episode of Beyond Your Backyard, which is on PBS with Eric the Travel Guide, and it's going to be airing this spring. Of course, we worked very hard on all of our media relations, and these are just a few of the accolades we received over the past two years. It's been two years since I came and gave an update to you guys. We were the best small town for cultural scene for USA Today, 20 Most Beautiful Main Streets in America by Reader's Digest, and Best Places to Propose. Our website users were up almost 24% in 2019 compared to 2018. And again, 30 Most Beautiful Main Streets across America, and that's Architectural Digest, which was, that's amazing. And the South's Best Restaurants in Every State, The Shack won that for Virginia. Stanton Music Festival in 2019, they were up 6.5% from the year before. Hyphen, their ticket sales revenue, they were up almost 16%. Queen City Mischief and Magic, it's so hard to determine how many people are here, but if you're downtown, then you know it's a lot. And then Happy Birthday America, they said they had over 9,000 people. In 2020 will mark the 50th anniversary of the Statler Brothers starting Happy Birthday The Frontier Culture Museum, their numbers were down slightly, 9%. Reason being is they got out of a lot of their events that they were hosting there. And a lot of times, they would count them as people coming to the museum, so, but their field trips are up, so that's good news. American Shakespeare Center, almost 60,000 tickets sold. Almost 10,000 were from out of state. They represented 47 states, and unique group sales were 517, so that's your schools coming in that we're not getting right now, high schools, colleges that visit the American Shakespeare Center. Wither Wilson Presidential Library, they were up almost 2% from 2018. Again, a few more of our accolades. Charming Main Streets in Each State for USA Today. Stanton was Virginia's representative. And why this region of Virginia could be the South's new foodie hotspot, and that was, Reunion was in there, The Shack was in there. We're almost at 22,000 Facebook followers, and Facebook generated 120,000 visits to our website, visitstanton.com, and over 4,000. visitstanford.com, and over 4 million impressions. We do a lot of our advertising on Facebook, as you can see. And we don't advertise locally or regionally. Usually, that's changing. These were a few of our campaigns that were the top generators of clicks and shares. And it's the same across the board. The 48-Hour Getaway to Richmond. We did one for Richmond, we did one for Northern Virginia, and we did one for Hampton Roads. An adventure campaign and unique experiences video. Hotel occupancy. Our room demand was up 11% in 2019. Our room supply was up 13%. Rev par, revenue per available room was down slightly. Our average daily rate was up slightly. And we compare it to Virginia and the United States here. And our occupancy was down just a little bit, but that's because we had so much more supply. But room revenue was up 12% at almost 27 million. So that's what happened in 2019. Now, in the last couple of weeks, it's been very difficult for the tourism industry. One of our hotels has had to lay off 49 people. They have, the revenue impact for March was, they lost $330,000. And in April, it's estimated to be almost $500,000. Their occupancy in March of 2019 was 77.5%. And in March of 2020 is 27.5%. And they are estimating for April, which would have normally been 78% occupancy, they're below 10%. Mary Baldwin has had to cancel their in-person accepted visitor days, which is really, has been great for our downtown and for our restaurants and our hotels. And that draws a couple of hundred people. Hyphex has had to cancel seven public events this spring. And it's a strong likelihood that if this carries through the summer, that number will increase to 65 events. The Woodrow Wilson Presidential Library said this has been devastating economically for them. Between the school groups, adult tours, general visitation, gift shop sales, they expect to lose about $76,000. So retailers, I heard from one retailer who has been open since 2013 in downtown Stanton. And 2019 was amazing for them. They were up almost 27% from the year before. As of right now, their sales are down 35% from last March. So we know that this is a difficult time. And what we've decided to do is to change our messaging. So I'd like for Katie to come in and talk about what do we do now?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. In the wake of COVID-19, we have had to pause all of our current campaigns. So that was our 48-Hour Spring Getaway campaign, among other things that we were going to focus on, like a girlfriend's getaway, some of those normal campaigns that we were going to run. And we had to quickly strategize on what our focus and our messaging would be, which came up, and we came up with Buy Local, Give Local, and Remember Local. This campaign really shows the resiliency and the creativity of our businesses and our nonprofits. The first effort is our Buy Local campaign, really supporting those local businesses with what they are doing and sort of that creativity that they have had to come up with in terms of takeout, curbside, delivery. I think you'll see across Facebook all the unique ways that they are now serving their clients and customers, including Growlers to Go from Queen City Brewing, Pizza Kits from Shenandoah Pizza. So they are really being creative. And we are really trying to get that word out about how you can support them right now, but also in the future with gift card purchases that you can use later. And we've done that with a new ad campaign that's going over social, as well as a post that links directly to the SDDA page. They have been a critical partner in this whole campaign. On their webpage, it has a current listing of all the businesses and what they are doing, as well as services. And there you'll see that dedicated landing page that they have developed and are currently updating on a daily basis. In addition, we really wanted to highlight those arts organizations and what they're currently doing in the wake of COVID-19. Again, they are really coming up with some creative ways to continue to serve their customers and followers. The American Shakespeare Center now just started Black Friars Station. It's a television, television station, I say with air quotes, where you can subscribe at $10 a ticket and watch their Actors Renaissance season, which they now have had to cancel. Hyphex, as Cheryl mentioned, had to cancel seven performances. And they actually just closed their gift shop on Beverly Street. Well, they have now created a Hyphex eBay store where you can donate local items, you can donate items that they will then sell, and they will receive all the profits from the sale of those items. So again, really just trying to show what these organizations are doing and how we can help them. This is a blog post all about how you can give locally to these organizations. And then Remember Local does the same thing, but it highlights our historic sites and museums. Woodrow Wilson Presidential Library, they are now using some grant funding to create interactive tours this week specifically. You can do a daily tour, I believe, at 10:00 a.m. And then they're also doing workshops and programs online that are given by their curator and their education director. So again, really just trying to focus on what these organizations are doing and how we can help them. This is, and then this messaging is going across all of our platforms. It's now on our website. If you go to visitstanford.com, on our header, we have Buy Local, Give Local, Remember Local, taking people to those different websites and landing pages. We recently just, or actually recently today, sent out a newsletter that focuses on our Buy Local and Give Local campaign. And we have halted our WNRN advertising. We are reworking that messaging so that, again, it is focusing on local. And that will be broadcast in Charlottesville. Our typical market is Richmond. So we should have that up and running soon. And then sort of more broadly, we will begin a more high-level or a brand, a high-level brand campaign that we hope will keep Stanton top of mind. So while people are sheltering in place, they will see some nice uplifting video from Visit Stanton. We hope, we are using the name recognition from Southern Living and one of our most current accolades, which is the South's Best Mountain Towns of 2020. And we were also featured in their February 2020, I'm not sure if it was magazine, was it magazine? As well as online. So what we did is we took those sort of soundbites, those great quotes from that article, and created a video, which I don't think is actually working. So it's, and it's early phase. Yeah, it's not going to work. Yeah, it's still in development, in early phases, but we will send it out to you so that you can get a feel for what that looks like. So we will be running this brand awareness campaign that will also feature social ads with those same quotes, but in more of a static format. That's all I have for this evening in terms of our local and regional focus in wake of COVID-19. I'm available for questions, if you have any.
Actually, I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, you have the link for the SDDA where you can go in to see which businesses are open or which ones are doing the curbside, which I think that's great. Do you have a link that shows other businesses outside of the downtown area?
Greg has agreed to put businesses outside of the downtown area on this page. So we just have to get him that information because he doesn't have the connect with them like we do. But he said that he would do that so that everybody is represented. You know, there's just no use in us doing it and SDDA doing it, you know? So I think, you know, he's a great partner, SDDA and Greg Beam, so.
Mayor Doll, or rather Cheryl and Katie, I wish we could have paused after you finished the 2019 report because it just, it's amazing what you all have done for Stanton and to bring people to Stanton and to celebrate the wonderful thing that Stanton is and our businesses and our community and everything. So I just wanted to thank you for that. I'm sorry to hear the rest of it. It's not going to get better, I know, anytime soon. But I think you guys do a great job and look forward to wonderful things in the future as well.
Thank you.
Mayor Doll.
Dr. Harrington.
I agree with what Ms. Mead just said about 2019. It's really a spectacular record of success. And I'm very proud of it. But I'm just as proud of what you said after that pause. Because it says something about you, your operation, the city, city government, the professional staff here. What it says is, something terrible has happened to us, came from nowhere, and here's what we've got to do to get ready to deal with it. And we're going to deal with it. And I don't know, I just, I appreciated the spirit that I think showed through that set of new strategies, new approaches. And it gives me some confidence that we will get where we're trying to get. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Doll.
Dr. Kyer.
I too am very impressed at how quickly you pivoted from having your audience be people from outside Stanton to having your audience be people inside and around Stanton. And so if our citizens ever have any doubt about the value of tourism investment for the city of Stanton, I hope that they will appreciate it how quickly you were able to change your approach for the situation on the ground. And I'm curious, I know you're working with the state and national tourism authorities and experts who are looking at trends and trying to predict what will happen after all this craziness becomes less crazy. And I'm guessing that there are certain things that they're predicting will happen, perhaps less international travel and more, that domestic travel will come back. Leisure travel, business travel, they will come back. The question is, how can we be prepared for that? And so I assume you're working with the experts on this, and you'll come up with some kind of a plan to help us recover?
Yes, absolutely. You know, we were the first to get hit. And hopefully, we'll be the first to recover.
Well, I'd like to add that, you know, 2019 looked pretty good. It looked excellent, actually. But I appreciate your strategy, what you're doing now. You've got the local emphasis, but not forgetting the brand that we have. You don't want people to forget that because there will be wider return of visitors from further away. So it's really smart to keep that out there. So thanks for all that both of you are doing in that area.
Thank you. Thank you. And we will be sending you this video. Katie worked really hard on it. She has the talents to be able to do things like this. So I can't wait for you to see it because it's gorgeous.
Thanks, Katie.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
So the added item E is next, and that is the Uncodified Emergency Ordinance. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor and members of council, I, during your work session, summarized for you the provisions of the ordinance proposed to provide relief to businesses and citizens in the city in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and its effects on the city. I would suggest that, having heard from me that you hear from Mr. Gwin about the ordinance from a legal standpoint, and then we would be pleased to entertain any questions that you have before you consider the ordinance for adoption.
All right, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Gwin.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. You should have in front of you, just so we have it clear for the record, if you'll permit me, the discussion draft dated 3/26/2023, 3:30 p.m. The council got an earlier draft before noon today, and we did some more editing as I previewed for you in my email communication to you. There's really no substantive change between this morning and this afternoon, except for the addition of the language on lines 114 through 116. And this is the provision about late payment of water bills. And if you pay in full by the end date, then you won't have the interest or the penalty. You'll get the benefit of the zero. The rest of the changes were largely an attempt at, and a futile attempt at near perfection. And you can blame me. And I thank Ms. Wallace for tolerating me the last 48 hours because this is an extraordinary ordinance given the variety of topics on an emergency basis to cobble together and try to get it right. I'm sure in hindsight, we'll see a couple of things that we would have done differently. I want to thank the city manager, assistant city manager, the commissioner of revenue, the treasurer and director of finance, and the whole team who contributed to making this ordinance possible, which was really accomplished between your late afternoon meeting on Tuesday and this morning. Mr. Rosenberg's done a good job of summarizing the essential elements of the ordinance. I don't have any doubt about the legality of the ordinance, or I wouldn't be standing in front of you or wouldn't have presented it to you. But we should appreciate that there's always someone who may want to question things, but I'm prepared to defend it to wherever we need to defend it. It's a remarkable piece of legislation, given what it sought to accomplish, what I believe it does accomplish, and in such a very short period of time. Be glad to take any questions you have.
Council members, do you have any questions at this time? Well, I certainly would like to thank everybody who did make this happen because we were, you know, coming up with what can we do? And then we need staff to be able to say, yes, we can do that, no, we can't, how we can do it. So appreciate all the work that's gone into that.
Madam Mayor, if I may, if I understand where I think you all are headed with a motion on this, let me address one more facility. on this, let me address one more facility, Section 4, which deals with the parking facilities. There was a discussion during your work session about extending the relief to monthly parkers in addition to daily and hourly parkers. And in the course of that conversation, I heard mention made of the Augusta Street Parking Lot, which is the lot basically across from the Visual Light Theater, across Augusta Street from the Visual Light Theater, between Augusta and New, where the infamous kiosk is located, which has been out of order for several months. And so in preparing this ordinance, we did not include that facility in the list of facilities where the relief would be provided because there are no daily or hourly parkers there presently because it's free. But we do have individuals who park there who do have reserved spaces. And there are some, some of them are residential customers and some of them are non-residential customers. And so I'm not sure that there's a basis to make a distinction between the monthly customers in that lot and the monthly customers in the other three facilities. So it may be that you wish to consider not only the deletion on line 125 of daily and hourly, but the addition on line 126 of what we refer to as the Augusta Street Parking Lot, if that's your pleasure.
Okay, councilmembers, do you have any questions about this?
I didn't. Madam Mayor.
Dr. Harrington.
Is it possible to find out, before we make a decision like that, how many of those reserved, we're talking about reserved lots here now, not just, not just a free spot if they're not available, we're talking about reserved slots. Is it possible to find out how many of those are rented by residents of the former McCormick's Building or other residences downtown? Does anybody have an educated guess as to what that proportion might be? I'm sorry, maybe it's, you're talking about the old Y? Yes. Perhaps a dozen spaces. Total?
Yes, sir.
So it's a dozen total. And of those, I would imagine that at least half are residents of the condominium and perhaps half are not residents of the condominium. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? I would entertain a motion at this time for someone who wrote down the changes and feel they're up to it.
Who wrote down the changes, but I'm not sure how to refer to this one. I would suggest, and Mr. Gwynn can jump in here, but I think it would be adequate for you to make a motion to approve the uncodified emergency ordinance draft dated March 26, 2020 at 3:30 p.m. with the following changes and then recite the changes.
Okay, great. All right, Mayor Doll.
Dr. Curran.
I would like to propose the ordinance.
I move to adopt.
Oh, I move to adopt. An uncodified emergency ordinance amending, restating, and reordaining certain code sections of the Stanton City Code to provide immediate temporary relief as drafted on March 26, 2020 at 3:30 p.m. with the following changes on, in Section 4, on line 125, to delete the phrase "daily and hourly." And then on line 126, after Wharf Parking Lot, well, first of all, before Wharf Parking Lot to delete the "and," and then after Wharf Parking Lot to add "and" the Augusta Street Parking Lot. So I propose to, I hope we can introduce and pass an ordinance to that effect.
I won't ask you to repeat that. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Harrington. So any other discussions? Ms. Simmons, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Curran.
Aye.
Dr. Harrington.
Aye.
Mayor Doll.
Aye.
Ms. Oates.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kyer.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Ocean Carey.
Thank you. Next are matters from the City Manager. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, briefly, I would like to thank Kurt Plowman and his staff for their efforts in pulling things together in this room so that we could conduct the meeting in the manner necessary under the circumstances. And Kurt and his staff continue their efforts to make it possible for us to convene, for you to convene in other ways in the days and weeks ahead, should that become necessary. The only, so those are all the remarks that I have. At this time, during my time, I would like to invite Billy Vaughn, the city's Economic Development and Community Development Director, to come and share with you the information that he has learned about resources that are available presently and in the near future to our local businesses.
Madam Mayor, members of council, as City Manager just said, I did some research to find out which, what business support services and financial resources were available to the business community, and looking at the federal level, state, and then locally. This information, I've been working on for about a day now. It's very fluid, keeps changing. So we hope to polish this document and give it, provide it to you, and then also place on the web, on the city's website for the business community to use. I want to start at the federal level, the stimulus package approved by Congress. Touch on the agencies briefly that will be receiving funding, that will provide services or financial support to the business community. Under the HUD CDBG, $1 billion to combat the spread of the COVID-19 virus. That should be released within 14, 45 days. The amount will be based on the best available data and need provided by HUD or decided by HUD. Also, $2 billion to be distributed to the states, again, based on the formula from HUD and the effects of the COVID-19 virus associated with economic and housing disruptions. The next is FEMA, $45 billion, response and recovery. But more importantly, $400 million for grants to fire EMS, EMS, emergency management, food, and shelter providers. Also, from the National Endowment of the Arts and Humanities, they will receive $150 million, which they have not been receiving a lot of money over the years. Half of that will go to the arts and half to the humanities. Minority Business Development Agency will receive $10 million in grant funding to support technical assistance to minority business development centers and Chamber of Commerce, Chambers of Commerce for counseling to those that have been affected by the virus. The SBA will receive $716 billion. We're talking about big dollars here, to try to help small business weather and survive the crisis. There'll be loan guarantees. There'll be funds for small business development centers. $10 billion for emergency program called the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program. And those funds will start at the federal level, move down to the state, and then be distributed regionally. An additional $17 billion in loan subsidies. And then there's a new program, Paycheck Protection Program. And I want to give you these details because I believe it's something that people can understand and it will truly help small business. Any small business that's a 501(c)(3), a 501(c)(19) with under 500 employees, it can be an independent contractor, sole provider, or self-employed, which is key. Maximum loan amount of $10 million. It can be used for payroll, insurance, rent, mortgage, utilities. It can also be used to retain workers. Borrow and lender fees are waived. Collateral and personal guarantees are waived. Interest rate of 4%. No prepayment fees, no deferred payments, I'm sorry, deferred payments on the loan for up to six, six to 12 months. Allows inclusion of additional money paid to tipped workers. And anything not forgiven or repaid by the end of this year will convert to a max 10-year loan, 4% interest, and guaranteed 100%. That's real money. And of course, the details on how it's going to funnel down to us, I don't know that. Looking at the state level, again, the EIDL, the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program. The state using the funds from the federal government will provide loans of up to $2 million through the SBA. That can be used to pay fixed debt, payroll, accounts payable, and other expenses. There's the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. That's for eligible, for employers eligible to remain open during the emergency. So if you're one of those essential operations, you can receive funds for cleaning your facilities and other support for emergency needs. I'm going to give you all of this in great detail, even more than I have here. Also, to support small restaurants, this, what I thought was very shocking, Virginia ABC is waiving regulations to allow restaurants to deliver beer and wine via takeout and delivery.
And they somehow all knew that already. They're busy with that particular item.
I didn't know it until I read it today. On the regional level, and I'm almost finished, City of Harrisonburg, through their existing loan program, created a disaster impact loan program, of course, for A to small business. Their total pool was $100,000. Max loan, 5,000, zero interest, three-year term, no payments for the first 90 days after the loans were closed. Use the funds for payroll, utilities, inventory, rent, whatever. They had 15 loans in the first three days, and they were expecting another five to seven, and then they would have used up all their funds. I spoke to Harrisonburg on Tuesday, I think. Waynesboro had, also had an emergency loan program for small business, again, an existing program where they had funds, they rolled over to this, for this matter. Their pool was about $50,000, 5,000 max loan, zero interest, three-year term. Could be used for payroll, utilities, inventory, rent, just like Harrisonburg. They had 11 loans, and they dispersed all of their funds. Also, just regionally, Channel Valley Small Business Development Center will be assisting those businesses trying to use the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Fund. So they're providing direct support. They also assisted Harrisonburg with dispersing their $100,000 of funding. And City of Stanton, of course, we have the Stanton Creative Community Fund, which is offering loans to small business. They're utilizing one of their existing pools of money, loans of up to $5,000, 2% to 3% interest. Repayment varies based on the borrower. And then the first three to six months of payments are interest only. And I'm sure you're well aware, the Community Foundation, they have a $100,000 fund, which they're providing support to local residents that are affected by the epidemic. So we currently are utilizing Stanton Creative Community Fund. They're our arm that provides loans to small business. So that may be a vehicle. You kind of stole my thunder there. The city wanted to consider a means to quickly provide funding for small businesses within the city. The other route is to, which would take, I'm sure, more time, but to use the EDA to create a revolving loan fund. But of course, the EDA doesn't have any funds either, so the city's had to provide those funds to the EDA. And talking to Harrisonburg and Waynesboro, if it weren't for the fact that they had those existing pools of money, it would have been very difficult to turn around in such a short time, provide that financial service and support. That's all that I have.
Ms. Mead. Mr. Vaughn, do you know what the amount of the fund at Stanton Creative Community Fund, do you know how much they have available?
No, I don't, but they have several different pools of funds that they, that the director could probably pull from to use for this, for this effort.
And Mr. Vaughn, those loans are not just restricted to businesses in the city of Stanton, is that correct?
For the Stanton Creative Community Fund?
Yeah.
You're correct.
So if we wanted to augment their pool of funds, we could stipulate that our money would only go to businesses inside the city?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn. I spoke with about 20 different business owners, and the one thing that they are concerned about is being able to receive a loan. They're really hoping that any loan that they're able to obtain through the Stanton Creative Community Fund would be zero interest and deferring any payments. I am definitely in support of whatever we can give to the Stanton Creative Community Fund. I don't know if it would be a matter of the reserve, rainy day fund, because right now the businesses are, they're drowning. But whatever we can provide to the Stanton Creative Community Fund would be great. Do we have any leeway with being able to talk to them about a 0%, like Harrisonburg and Waynesboro are offering?
I'm sure we could, but... I haven't been involved in SECF. I'm sure that we could structure the loan package in a way that we could place any conditions on the monies that they're dispersing to the businesses.
Okay.
But it's something that I would confer with legal.
Let me add to that, Harrisonburg has already announced, when they were announcing their fund to their citizens, that the Stanton Creative Community Fund was also available. So I would... So I would hope that we get, moving forward with our citizens before their, yeah, Stanton Creative Community Funds are depleted, one way or the other, and they don't even reach our businesses. So that's already out, that's been out for three or four days now. And as you just stated here, it doesn't take long for twenty-five thousand dollar loans to disappear. So I'm hoping, again, that we can get with those businesses you're mentioning and move forward as quickly as possible.
And I like the idea of focusing on Stanton businesses first.
But does, does Harrisonburg provide funding to the Stanton Creative Community Fund?
They do not.
Does Waynesboro?
They have in the past.
Augusta County?
They had a vehicle put in place to do so, but for some reason, they did not implement their program.
Mayor Dole? That, that's primarily why I felt that we should stipulate that if the city makes an additional grant and Creative Community Fund in the amount of eighty or a hundred thousand dollars, that we have to stipulate that those funds would go to City of Stanton businesses and not other, not businesses outside the city.
You know, the question becomes, it becomes a Mr. Traer question. Do we have funds available? I'm not in favor of hitting the reserve fund at this point, because we don't know how bad things may get. So, I think the question is, do, are there any funds for us to even talk about? One thing for our small businesses, the federal government looks at small businesses as anyone that has two hundred and fifty or less, or less than two hundred and fifty employees. So when we think of small businesses, we're thinking of our downtown businesses, our local businesses, which are, just have a few employees. And so this, the SBA money can be used by larger entities. But the good news is the third stimulus bailout they've, that will be passed tomorrow, I think, is allowing independent contractors to sign up for unemployment. That's, that's a big deal.
Yes, Madam Mayor, there are some undesignated funds in the fund balance that we could draw from. A hundred thousand dollars would be a good chunk of that. But I can work with the city manager, and, and we can come back with counsel in short order on that for you. I think we have a budget work session scheduled next week. Perhaps we could have an amount for you at that time, if that would be acceptable.
And, and I'm curious, though, if it's undesignedated, there had to be some intention for it. We, we don't just have it lying around.
No, we don't. We, we had originally put that aside for, for jail reserve, and, and, and we could draw from that, perhaps.
I would, I would like for us to look at the availability of funds from the Stanton Creative Community Fund, or their, their resources in the process, because they may, I know they get a lot of USDA backing, so they may be more fluent than even our fund.
That's a good point, Vice President Carr. It would be good to know specifically how much funds they have available, and if there are any, any criteria that they have to meet in how they're used. Maybe they can't do a zero percent, you know, who knows? And then how much we could afford.
Yes, I could get those numbers for you, but I don't believe they can do a zero interest loan.
Yep.
But they do have additional dollars from other federal and state agencies, such as SBA, so.
Now, do you mean, they cannot do the zero interest rate loans based off of the funding that they have?
Have, under those current programs.
Right. But now, if we were to provide the hundred thousand, we could have the stipulation?
We could, yes.
Could we also consider offering a hundred and eighty days deferred payment, entirely deferred, not just interest only, but no payment for a hundred and eighty days?
That would be your call. Yes, you could. We, we could design the program the way that council desires.
Yeah, because at that point, SCCF is just a fiscal agent, or handling the administrative part, so we, we could design it to decide how we wanted it to be structured. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
If I may add, Madam Mayor, we'll pull this information together for council, and I would just urge caution as you consider next steps, because I think that we know, you know, we don't know the magnitude of the impact on the city's own operations, but it's certain to be significant. And so there's going to be, you know, potentially competing, potentially competing priorities here, that I would suggest council consider as it decides whether to provide the sort of relief that you're discussing now. But we certainly will pull that information together for you.
Mr. Rosenberg, my, I guess a question I would have is that, do you feel that we may be disproportionately impacted, based on what we're hearing from our restaurant and lodging business compared to Harrisonburg and Waynesboro? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not sure that I'm in a position to offer any sort of a comparison to other localities, but I think that the anecdotal information that we have thus far suggests that we're going to have a significant impact.
I, I just am trying to get, you know, is, is the impact on us going to be greater proportionately than the impact on Harrisonburg or Waynesboro, because we have more lodging, restaurant, and tourism business?
I, I don't, I don't, I'm not, I don't have a response to that. I don't know.
I appreciate, I know, I know, I appreciate that.
Yeah, but I, but what I do know is that there will be a significant impact, and that we're going to have to make changes, not only in the FY21 budget, but in the FY20 budget as well.
Yeah.
Ms. Mead?
And I, I appreciate the information that Mr. Vaughn has put together about all of these loans and, and what, where they're going to go in terms of the kind of support that they're going to provide, but, you know, the devil's in the details on these things, as he pointed out as well. We, we don't know if Stanton is going to be a flea on the back of a dog, because we're so small compared to places like New York City and Chicago and Seattle, where this virus has, has really devastated in, in major proportion. And, and we don't know if it's going to end up coming to us at the end of the day, just because we're so small in comparison to those major areas. And so, I think it's going to be important for us to be able to understand what, what's going out, who's, who's going to be a priority?
Yes.
And then, you know, and, and what our citizens can expect. And I think the unemployment insurance for, for, for contractors, I mean, that, that includes the folks who cut our hair, right? And, and, and they can now get unemployment insurance. It's the folks who work in salons and spas.
All the people that are in the gig economy.
Exactly.
Right. So it's really significant for those self-employed folks, I would think.
You may not have had an opportunity to see your emails before you came to the meeting, but I forwarded to each of you an email from a member of Senator Kane's staff that has some useful summaries, I think. I only had a limited opportunity myself to review the materials, but I think that there are some useful summaries of the federal legislation. And the point that you've made, Ms. Mead, about the, the size of Stanton, I think, is a factor. I think that some of these packages that are working their way through Congress are focused on localities with larger populations.
And as well, they're probably going to be focusing on who's having direct effect from COVID in terms of hospital payments and reimbursing localities for masks and, and everything. And we don't know how we're going to be affected yet, so. But the other thing is, it's really fluid, because, you know, I got that notice I'd forwarded to you today, where the Workforce Development Board has grants. It's on the website. You know, so, people are trying to push out and help, and those are for businesses. And so, there, there are things available, so we just need to make sure we're paying attention. I think Stanton, or some of our businesses in Stanton have a good opportunity with the arts and humanities.
Mayor Dole?
Ms. Oaks?
I do believe that's an excellent point. By the time it reaches Stanton, there may not be very much left. So when this council considers the potential additional funding to go to the Stanton Creative Community Fund, the makeup of comparing us to Harrisonburg and Waynesboro, we are, we are different. I mean, we are a destination city. And so, we do have a lot of our tourist areas, our tourist businesses, if you will, that are, that are being just devastated. And as a result, it affects the other businesses within the area as well.
All right. Any other comments? But we'll, we'll look at the information at our budget work session. All right. Ms. Mead wanted to talk about golf clubs. We didn't get to finish that in the work session.
Yeah, my, my point was that we are, we are closing recreational facilities throughout the city. It, it impacts hundreds, if not thousands, of people in the area who use our recreational facilities. I, I think that we could use resources in the city better and, and ask golfers to walk the course. And then, and then offer an incentive for golfers to bring young people, bring their kids, bring their grandchildren to the golf course this summer. Their, their sports have been disrupted. This might be a perfect time for us to generate more interest in the golf course, if we allow folks to access the course at no cost, if they walk the course, and if they bring somebody twenty-five years or twenty-four, under the age of twenty-five, with them to the golf course. It's an, it's an incentive to bring golfers back to the golf course, and it frankly is not going to be that expensive. If we're not, if, if, if we're not trying to maintain golf carts and sanitize them after everyone uses them.
I'm sitting here smiling a little bit, but to Ms. Mead's point, pretty much the only time anybody's sitting in that golf cart is off the first tee, anyway. Because once this one hits that way, and that one hits that way, you don't see any of each other until you get back to the green, anyway. Mr. Vaughn is back there laughing, but from experience, I pretty much walk the entire course, anyway, so.
Yeah, I was going to ask, were you speaking from personal experience?
Yes, that's what I'm speaking from experience.
And that would be my personal experience, too.
Yes, so, that's not a bad recommendation.
So, I'm, I'd like to split these issues and consider them one by one. I think the first is whether to impose a walk-only requirement in the current circumstances. And the second is whether to provide an incentive of the sort that Ms. Mead is suggesting. On the first issue, we've, we've made a decision just yesterday, in consideration of public health, to impose a, a one person per cart requirement. So up until the, the day before yesterday, two golfers could ride together in a cart. But we reconsidered that, and we made a choice. Staff made a choice between imposing a walk-only requirement, or imposing a one player per cart requirement, in order to ensure the maintenance of social or physical distance. I don't know that it will, you know, I'm not sure that, and I can't say whether it's been a significant use of staff time or resources to wipe, to wipe down the carts between players. So, you know, we made, we made a choice at the staff level, which way to go, in order to assure public health. And I don't even need a vote if, you know, if you all think we made the wrong choice, and that we should go with walking only, instead of one player per cart, we can make that happen.
I, I had one question, comment, or whatever. And it has more to do with the incentive side, or the free, you know, it's free, and if you bring a kid, or whatever. You know, there's always the unintended consequence thing that can happen. And I worry, like, who, who's going to monitor, in case we get fifty people that want to all play golf with their kids, who's going to make sure they're maintaining physical distance?
Well, and let me, and let me suggest to you that, I mean, we've made, you know, some people have said that we should close the course. Not, and, and let me be clear, I'm talking about closing the course in the current emergency We have made the decision thus far to keep the course open, and that decision has been made in consultation with Dr. Carnegie. And, you know, the, the notion is that, given the way golf is played, that it provides an appropriate outdoor recreational opportunity in the current circumstances. And I don't imagine that the course is going to be flooded if we make it free for people, but we're going to, it has the potential to attract more individuals. And we've seen already what is, what occurs, and you may have seen, we put a release out today, about how we hope and expect citizens will conduct themselves in the parks during the current emergency. As I said to you during the emergency meeting the other day, it's not a normal day in the So I'm, I'm happy to shift from one player per cart to walk only, but I'm not sure that this is the time to try to incentivize people to come out and, and use the course. And if council wishes to look at that, once we get beyond the current circumstances, you know, I'm happy to entertain that, but I'm not sure that it's the right move in, in the current environment.
Dr. Harrington?
I'm real uncomfortable micromanaging decisions that were made yesterday or the day before by our professional staff about how to manage the day-to-day business of the golf course, or any other facility in the city. I would, I would rather, you know, it's a suggestion, it's an idea. I would rather ask the city manager to convey that to the folks who are actually running the golf course. Maybe there are considerations that are worth exploring about that. But I, but I'm not in favor of us, in this body, and in these times, making these kinds of specific policy judgments about how the, about how the running of the golf course, or any other function, should take place. So, what, what I would propose is that we, is that we just ask the city manager to take the, the tenor of this conversation back to the next time you have a discussion about any of these things. See if anybody that has real knowledge about how to run a golf course thinks it's a good idea, or it's a terrible idea because of the following reasons, and implement what parts of it are useful, and don't implement the parts of it that are not useful. But I don't want to make policy for the golf course here tonight.
I agree with you, Dr. Harrington, that...
I'm okay with that.
I, I just want to make sure we're following the, the recommendations from the health perspective, which I think we are. So, head nod around?
Safety first, yeah. We'll leave it to your discretion.
And I, I will assure all of you, including Ms. Mead, that it's... And I will assure all of you, including Ms. Mead, that this is a topic, all of this is a topic that I will share with Chris Tuttle. And, you know, we are keeping a close eye in the current emergency situation on what makes sense in terms of the operation of the course. And I think, as I've suggested to you, that, that that could include up to a closure of, of the golf course. You know, I would note, and I think that this is still accurate so far as I know, that as of today, there are no confirmed cases in Augusta County or the city of Stanton. And that influences us in the way that we look at the situation. Once we have a confirmed case in the county or the city, we will be reevaluating all of the decisions that we've made thus far, and may then take a next step, not only with respect to the golf course, but with respect to other facilities in, in the parks as well.
All right, thank you. Well, that was a whole lot for matters from the city manager, so we'll move on to matters from the public. Anyone wishing to speak from the public, please come into the room and give your name and address, speak at the podium. Is there anyone wishing to speak tonight?
How long do I have? Five minutes? Something like that? Okay. That's fine. My name is Yvonne Wilson. I live on 217 First, 2017 First Street in Stanton. I am a lifelong conservative. I have deep roots in this state as I am a descendant of the oldest recorded slave families in the United States, A'Quander. One of my ancestors, Henry Quando, was freed in 1864 and was one of the first black males to adopt and act on the idea of civil rights. My coming here and speaking is honoring the sacrifices my ancestors made so long ago in Mount Vernon. I am addressing certain concerns concerning the actions of the city council. On Wednesday afternoon, I met Andrea Oaks for the first time as she stopped by the Royal Gas Station on West Beverly, which is where I work. I overheard her speaking to one of my coworkers, asking about our concerns concerning our state emergency. When asked what she did, she told me that she was part of the city council. I then asked, why hasn't the city of Stanton voted on whether we are a Second Amendment sanctuary? She then explained that the council will not vote on it. In addition, she explained that a motion was made to bar her from ever bringing up anything concerning Second Amendment sanctuary. I take umbrage with this, because I close my store at night. I also walk home alone at night, and for most of my shift, I am alone. Recently, we have had a spate of robberies and assaults not far from my home. I know being a Marine means that I am trained to defend myself adeptly, but I don't recall being trained to stop a robbery or assault with Twinkies, Ho Ho's, and coffee. There is a policy in place, and we are told to comply with the robber and give him anything he wants. But what if that's not enough? What if the criminal wants to take things further? The police are at risk of contracting the virus themselves. If and when the coronavirus spreads to the police force, they must be quarantined for at least two weeks, which means less cops on the streets, which means less protection for citizens like me and all the women who work late by themselves. What contingencies do you have in place to mitigate such a disaster? People are getting desperate, and we all know what mass desperation turns into. If we don't have a militia, we need one. If not, what are you going to, are you going to post the National Guard at my store, at my house? Who's going to have my back on my walk home at night? What we don't need is further infringement on our right to protect ourselves. We also cannot afford to ignore this issue. To do so is to our detriment. Those of you on the left of this issue, we've heard your side, and you've made a subservient to it. We have a press that wants to police our speech and the amendment that protects it. We are scolded for calling the coronavirus the Wuhan flu, Chinese virus, or Kung flu is racist, while you sit back and not only allow but encourage measures that have a sordid past and historical roots in slavery, oppression, and racism. What's worse is the fact that you choose to honor the laws of the very governor that has insulted my race and my ancestors. You're no different than the slave masters of old, and you choose to uphold laws that negate the very rights my ancestors died for. By passing a motion to take away someone's right to speak upon subjects you do not agree, you are making chattel slaves out of us in principle. We do not elect you to infringe upon anyone's rights but to uphold them. That includes your fellow council members. We couldn't speak either. We couldn't vote. We couldn't own land. We couldn't own guns. Remember the Dred Scott case? Judge Toney ruled against him all because he did not want Mr. Scott to have the right to bear arms. It doesn't matter if you dress this up as keeping children safe or preventing gun nuts from going on a rampage. You're doing no different than the very people who enslaved us in the first place. These measures are taking us right back into slavery and negates over 150 years of progress. You upholding Governor Northam's gun grabbing is an insult to me as an American, as a Marine Corps vet, and as a descendant of slaves. It spits in the very face of my people and the grounds they slaved upon. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward, give your name and address at the podium. Anyone else wishing to speak? With no one else wishing to speak, this meeting is adjourned.